AM on the sixteenth of August, we will be calling this meeting to order. And as usual, we will start with the Chaplain Prayer and pledges, and we have Gary Marcella Jenkins here to lead us in both.
Good morning, Mayor, and Members of the Council. Will you please join with us in a word of prayer? Father in Heaven, in the name of Jesus, we bow before you to say thank you for another day that you have made. Lord, we praise you and we seek your face and your counsel for wisdom and for knowledge and revelation, for understanding and the ability to take on the business of the city in a way that will glorify you. Father, we also place a petition before you, asking you for rain for West Texas, and that the crops and the farmers and everyone will be able to be able to thrive. As the new school year is about to begin, we pray, Father, for the safety of all of the children that will be attending not only here in San Angelo but throughout the state of Texas and the nation. We pray, Father, that you guide us and be with us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
We will now go into the public comment section of the agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single member district, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Council has no obligation to respond to comments or questions from the public, and a response from a member of the City Council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, recitation of existing policy, and directing staff to place a subject on a future agenda. Do we have anyone in the audience today who would like to come forward on public comment? Seeing none, we will now move into the consent agenda. I will start with Larry. Is there an item you'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
Oh, ma'am.
No, ma'am. Karen, Lucy?
F.
We'll pull item F. I'm going to pull item B and C. Harry?
Oh, ma'am.
Tom?
Oh, ma'am.
Tommy?
Oh, ma'am.
All right. May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda with the exception of items B, C, and F? So moved? So moved by Karen, seconded by Harry. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of B, C, and F, please say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, consent agenda is approved. We'll start with item B. Consider approving the purchase of thirty-nine mobile data terminals from Rugged Notebooks. That always says something, rugged notebooks.
Rugged.
Rugged notebooks.
Yeah, that's it.
For one hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty cents to DIRTSO four oh seven five and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Chief Brody, you're on.
Good morning, Council Mayor. Patrick Brody, Fire Chief. What questions did you have on me for that?
Well, describe what thirty-nine mobile data terminals are and what the product is and why we need it.
Each one of our fire apparatus and our ambulances, they carry a computer onboard. And what that does is it gives us dispatch information in the field, and then also after we complete the transport, we can complete our required documentation and a run report in the field. We get back to the station and we can upload it to the computer into the cloud for processing, for billing. On the fire truck side, it provides location, address location, fire hydrant location while we're responding to an incident. It'll also give any type of hazardous note taking from the dispatcher if we need to information sent to our units in the field. So Y number, Y thirty-nine, each unit will have one MDT, mobile data terminal, in each fire truck. And then also, the ambulance has two units. One unit is the mobile data terminal and the other unit is basically a tablet to do the paperwork on. We actually looked at eliminating one of those units to reduce the cost on it and working with Rugged Notebook and working with our IT department. There's an issue when you take that unit out of the ambulance and go into the hospital to do your paperwork. You actually drop your Wi-Fi connection and there's a three to five-minute time period, and Ruben can probably speak on this better than I can. But it drops our connection and then it takes three to five minutes to reestablish that connection, log back into the system. So for the price point, we went ahead and did two units on each ambulance. Okay? Why do? That's the reason why we need them. That's the reason why the number and rugged, they had to be ruggedized because they're out in the field, dropped, banged up, wet environments, cold environments, so.
That's budgeted?
Yes, ma'am. We've been working on, Ruben and I have been working on this project for almost a year now. We have the funds available. This project started off at around four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and I wasn't going to accept that. Working with the vendor, different vendors, trying to get the price down, working with our exact counts that we needed, because it wasn't just the tablets that we needed, we needed the installation, the hardware for them to attach to our units. So working through this diligent process for over a year, we got the price down to one hundred fifty-seven thousand, and we have that amount of money in our budget to cover it without requesting additional general funds.
Thank you. Chief Brody, does anyone else have a question that they would like to ask Chief Brody?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Larry.
These are obviously a replacement for a previous unit. Could you tell me how much where, how old the current ones are?
Yes, our current units, they're over ten years old. And when you're talking technology, that is a long life. And we've been pleased with our old units. They've lasted a good while. We're having a hard time finding replacement equipment because they do break. Our last unit that broke, the screen cracked on it, and we weren't able to replace the screen. We were looking at replacing the whole unit. And we had a few spares. We don't have any more spares. They're getting more and more difficult to find replacement parts for. Not to mention the battery life is almost done on them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Brody? All right.
Move to approve.
Lucy has made a motion to approve. May I? Seconded by Tommy. Any public comment on these rugged?
It is a tongue twister, I agree.
Rugged notebooks.
A public comment, seeing none, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposing, the motion passes seven zero. Item C, consider awarding task order number seven under IDIQ contract ES-0619 Engineering Services to Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated in amount of two hundred fifty-four thousand dollars for traffic signal design plans for six intersections and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Patrick, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Patrick Farrick, Director of Operations. This item is in conjunction with a Highway Safety Improvement Grant, or HSIP, grant that we were awarded through Tech Dot for the improvement of the safety components of six intersections throughout town. One of those intersections is a city-owned intersection, the other five are on Tech Dot right away, so, but the city is responsible for those upgrades. What this grant will do is this is the design function of that. After we get the design, we'll be going out for the construction bid on the construction of those intersections, improving them, updating them. The HSIP is specifically designed to improve the safety value of those, and those intersections are ranked based on the number of vehicular and pedestrian accidents at the particular intersections. So this will be a big improvement as well as updating intersections that are well exceeding their useful life right now.
Can you tell us those six intersections, please?
Yes, ma'am. So the first one, that is a city-owned intersection, is at Sunset and Southwest. It's going to be in conjunction with our Sunset Drive Improvement Project that the city's going to be designing here shortly. The next one is going to be Sherwood Way and Arden Road, then FM three eighty-eight and Chadburn, US eighty-seven, or Bryant and Twenty-Ninth, Bryant and Knickerbocker, and Bryant and Nineteenth Street. Just as a side note, Bryant and Avenue L and Avenue N are being done through a separate grant project through Tech Dot, so several of those intersections along Bryant will be improved at this time.
I think with the addition of that new McDonald's, there certainly, we need to look at the traffic, additional traffic that's going to exist and how we manage that up and down Bryant Boulevard.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Patrick? With none, we can either approve it now or wait till we get to item F and do it together. All right.
Move approval, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead, Tommy, second.
Second.
Lucy's second. Any public comment? Seeing none, then we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving item C, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, seven, zero. We won't thank you, Patrick. We will move into item F. Consider approving an agreement with HUD in the amount of one hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred and thirty to fund a rapid rehousing for the homeless program and authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Bob?
Good morning. Do you have a question?
Yes, Bob, can you explain to us the rapid rehousing?
Yes, this grant we got about three years ago. This is our third, actually is our third iteration. It's a grant to help individuals who are homeless get permanent housing relatively quickly. We say, that's why we have the term rapid rehousing. But it has a component of case management. So we provide case management, we provide permanent housing, and we have a component called coordinated entry where our partners can log in and people, homeless individuals can actually go to a one node and get into the system. This is where we share the information and we can better provide services to our homeless community.
As of last year, how many people did you help in this program, would you say?
Well, we're limited, of course, with funding and all that, but seventy-five thousand of that goes to case management. So we're actually paying the Public Housing Authority to execute that program. As of last year, I believe it was twenty-five individuals were navigating through two permanent housing. Now, these individuals were not chronic homeless. They were mostly situational homeless, families with kids that quite, you know, lost their job or whatever, and they're relatively easy to deal with. The chronic homeless was a little bit more difficult. We had one individual that we tried to get through, but it was, it turned out to be pretty difficult to get him through the system. So we're trying them.
So like, whenever you provide the permanent housing, how does that work?
It's basically the same as any other Section Eight voucher program. It just basically takes the person, gets them into the system quickly versus the year-long waiting period it takes for anyone to get on the Public Housing Authority waiting list. And that's how, that's how we get it to, that's why we call it rapid and quick. It gets them up to the top of the list, gets them into housing, somewhere in apartment, somewhere in the city. There's no specific area.
You request, you know, there are help wanted signs everywhere. So the question mark is, how do you work with them to get them back out in an employed position?
That's part of the case management process. The case manager will walk them through from start to finish. We get them in, a lot of times we find that they don't have identification, so we get them identification. A lot of time they need training, we'll give them some training. We work with the folks, I'm drawing a blank here, the workforce solutions to get job opportunities and that kind of thing. So that's how it works. It's our partners.
Is there a time limit that they're?
Yes, two years. You have two years to basically get on your own. And hopefully what happens is once you get somebody in, into the system and they're successful, they mature out and they could potentially stay on the Section Eight program and have long-term support from Public Housing Authority.
One more question. This fifteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars that you use for city administration, what is that exactly?
That's to help pay for some of the staff, city staff, that helps manage that. Mostly me and one of my staff members actually manages the contract. It helps, it just helps us overall. We don't want to, we certainly don't want to work, we want to eliminate the use of general funds as much as we can. This is an opportunity to use other funds to help pay for our admin costs.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
Are there any other questions or comments, Larry?
Based on the narrow focus of a particular group, it would seem as though your success rate on these people should be pretty high. Do you have anything you'd like to say concerning how many of them essentially have thrived and how many?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can get that for you. I can put, I'm sorry, I don't, the Public Housing Authority kind of manages that program for us, but I can reach out to them and get that information for the last three years. So again, the success is usually for those who are situational homeless. Unfortunately, the chronic homeless is a little bit different, different problem.
We're not talking chronic here.
We're not talking, although we have, we have, we have helped in the past, but they're just a little bit harder to work with, so.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Bob? All right, Lucy then moved to approve. May I have a second?
Second.
A second by Karen. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving item F, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, F is approved, seven to zero. That completes the consent agenda today. We will now move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. The first one is presentation of Downtown San Angelo's Inc.'s biannual report, and Dale Velazquez and Monica Ramos is here today to present.
Good morning, Council. We're going to change things up a little bit. I've asked Monica to give the presentation and I'll just have some closing comments.
Monica Ramos, Assistant Director of Downtown San Angelo. Downtown has maintained fourteen years of Main Street accreditation. This is quite an accomplishment for us because what this means is that each year we submit accreditation standards that must meet a specific set of criteria, and these are rigorous standards that we go through. In order to receive accreditation, communities should show efforts of meaningful and sustainable revitalization programs and include standards such as fostering strong public-private partnerships, supporting small businesses, and actively preserving historic places, cultures, and cultural assets. This designation signifies a strong commitment to preservation-based economic development and community revitalization through the Main Street approach. I recently attended a Main Street retreat and I was able to meet with other Main Street cities, and I can say that San Angelo is at the top of the list here. We're doing really great, folks. And the Main Street approach goes off of four points, which is design, organization, promotion, and economic vitality. And I'll touch on a few of those points throughout the presentation. Excuse me, this is my first time using this electronic device.
And it's not rugged.
Was that a brand name or was it just a rugged laptop? Or was it the brand name rugged? Okay.
All right, so our mixed beverage and sales report here is showing the calendar year went back from 2020 to 2021 and the first and second quarter of 2022 so that we can kind of see the changes here. As you can see, 2021 and 2022 reflect positive increases. So we've really come up from the downfall of 2020, but we're showing a steady recovery. Our numbers are starting to show positively. And I did take a look back to prior years and really looking at 2022 and where we project to be. We're about average, if not, might be a little bit higher in our numbers here. And it does show our percentages for San Angelo as a whole, our central business district, and our Main Street area. So you can kind of see how each of those are reflected through each quarter. Our reinvestment report, over the years, we have collected almost three hundred million in reinvestment dollars. This is really great because what reinvestment numbers are is data that's collected based off of rehabilitations or renovations in downtown. And these annual reinvestment figures include private, public-private, and public rehabilitation Our Chadburn Street, Streetscape, we are already seeing a great impact of foot traffic, and this is due to our Chadburn Streetscape redesign. We have our new streetlights, new landscaping, the benches have been installed. The next phase of the project will be art installation, but I can really attest to seeing a difference in foot traffic. More people are walking, skateboarding, taking time to come to downtown and have this activity going on. This is the hub of our city, so this is the place for people to come, and we do want to enhance it as best that we can, and this streetscape really does make a difference. As you know, that's how it impacts cities through pedestrian traffic, increased quality of life, bringing communities together, and that's exactly what this has done and will continue to do for our future. Not only is it attraction for downtown and for visitors, but also for new businesses. So this here is complete, going on with this slide and the next slide, complete new businesses in downtown, and this is actually from 2020 to 2022. In 2020, we had eleven new businesses open their doors. 2021 was seven, and up to this date, we've had eight new businesses, and we are expecting five more by the end of the year. What I really love about our downtown is that we have a variety of businesses. When I went to the Main Street Retreat, we did take walking tours, and there were some beautiful downtowns. However, they were lacking-
Where were you for this program?
Victoria, Texas, Goliad, and Cuero. And so I will reference Victoria. It was a beautiful downtown. They had a really nice streetscape. However, they were lacking entertainment and activity. They maybe had one restaurant, two boutiques. Everything was filled with offices and law firms, which is great. However, our downtown creates a sense of community. It's a place where anyone of all ages can come to, go shopping, enjoy, have their leisure activity. And as you see through the list of businesses here, we have a wide variety. We have a boba tea shop, we have our shopping, we have insurance places, restaurants. We have a big variety of businesses that, again, are for everyone to enjoy. Our Southern Tears projects totaled two hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, just for the southern area. I'll kind of go through each project here and kind of talk about what these funds are going towards here. Six forty-one and six forty-three South Chadburn and sixty-one North Chadburn are for renovations on these properties.
We finally got started on it. I noticed that yesterday. They've just take, they're working on them now.
Oh, yeah, yes. These are all in progress. These are progress photos, and the three that I just mentioned, yes, they're undergoing renovations, which is really great because, again, if we have some nice-looking properties in downtown, that's going to bring in new investments as well. Six, excuse me, four sixteen South Oaks will become office spaces. One oh nine South Chadburn is going to be a really interesting spot for downtown. It will become a Circuit Breaker Arcade, so family-friendly place to go and enjoy arcade games. Seventeen West Beauregard-
Do you have an approximate opening date on one oh nine South Chadburn?
Unfortunately, I do not. I believe there were a few setbacks, but hopefully soon. I believe they're pretty close to being complete. They already had the arcade game set up. They have a bar area, so getting close to their final steps on opening.
May I have a question?
Daniel?
Are we talking Donkey Kong and Pac-Man or whatever?
Yes, yes, yes. Vintage and present-day video games and arcade games. So it'll be a fun place to go. Seventeen West Beauregard, really looking forward to that. This is going to be the fourth place on Beauregard that is a new business. It would be Froyo Sweets and Treats Downtown, so it'll be a sister business to Urban Salt, Public Hype, and West Texas Boba Tea House, so a great addition to Beauregard Avenue. And then thirteen East Tuig is currently undergoing facade improvement. It is proposed to be a restaurant and bar. Right now, the facade isn't being worked on, but the interior is under construction.
It's a Charlie Music building, correct?
Yes, that's right. Our marketing and promotions for downtown, I just wanted to touch on what we do to bring visitors to downtown and to visit our businesses. Of course, the Sheep Spectacular continues to flourish and thrive. Not only is this a fundraiser for our organization, we get to answer why all the sheep. And we get to say, well, you know, we have the Miss Wool pageant, there's a lot of history tied to the sheep, and they're placed all over San Angelo, so it's not just for downtown. This is something for our entire city and even the surrounding area. Anyone can come and talk to us about sponsoring a sheep. They promote economic development. We have our sheep unveilings that have been a really good way to shed light on our sponsors and bring people to the businesses. They're great for photo opportunities.
How many sheep have you now placed?
Great question. Great question. So we have a hundred and nineteen total completed sheep, and there are eight that are pending final artworks. That's a total of one twenty-seven that have been sponsored. That is a huge number, and every week we have a new phone call or email asking about the sheep. So there's going to be even a whole handful more that are up and coming, and again, it's really great.
Can you imagine what the city would look like today if we took all those sheep away?
Oh, I know, and they're such a great attraction. We have visitors from Goodfellow Air Force Base that bring in their family and friends, new students from Angelo State University. This is all new to them, so they love it. And even for our local people, it's always exciting to see the new you, and the artwork just keeps getting better and better. Each sheep has their own personality and their unique names. And so it's really fun also just for everyone to come out and try to seek each sheep, which gets me into our sheep scavenger hunt. Last fall, I started a scavenger hunt specifically for downtown, and there were clues that had historic information about each location of the sheep. So it served as an educational tool, but also gave the people that were seeking the sheep an opportunity to get a free T-shirt, free Sheep Happens T-shirt. Unfortunately, we did discontinue the sheep scavenger hunt, but we do still have our T-shirts for sale for ten dollars. You can contact us to get one. We are working on a sheep map. We've had many requests to create a visual of where you could find all the sheep, and we have Alexis Goodwin, who is a past intern of ours from Angelo State University. We should have a publication in print and online completed by the end of November, so we're really looking forward to sharing that with everyone. Our downtown Strong Stroll, it normally took place every third Thursday of the month. This year, we switched gears and centered it around holidays and only had it six months out of the year, but we also included a stroll tour guide. The Concho Valley Transit District recorded numbers of ridership for us, and we've had an average of sixty riders on the trolley. So people are coming to downtown. They're interested in the activities that are taking place. And mind you, these dates are on a Thursday, so it's not a busy Friday or Saturday for these folks that are open past hours for the stroll. So this says a lot to bring people to downtown, and I've ridden on the trolley and I've been the stroll tour guide myself, and there are even some individuals who get on the trolley just to ride and hear what I have to say. And what I'm talking about are event updates along the route. I'll give historical information about properties in downtown, and then also, of course, talk about the participating locations. Our Historic Downtown Magazine is a biannual publication. This one that's shown here is with a center story about the San Angelo Sandborne Maps, the Sandborne Fire Insurance Maps from the nineteenth century. This is a really interesting article because it depicts San Angelo's geography as it was back then, and so it's really neat to look at the photos and then also read the article. But I'll let you guys do that. You can pick up a copy at our office at Downtown San Angelo. You can look online, downtownsanangelo.com. Any of the businesses in downtown or the surrounding area have copies as well. Our Brews Use and Barbecue, which is not listed on here, I wanted to mention that because that is a huge fundraiser for us, but big as far as community engagement. We have cook teams that travel in from across Texas and even from Mexico that participate in this barbecue cook-off to compete for best lamb, brisket, beans, chicken. We have local craft vendors, local live music. We even bring in our local breweries to participate, and it's free entry to the community, so anyone and everyone is welcome to attend. It's fun-for-all. It's fun for all ages. And it really is a great opportunity for our downtown to have some extra activity going on. And so our next date will be March 3rd and 4th of 2023. And we're really looking forward to it.
In the last couple of years, Downtown San Angelo has picked up the slack on a few projects that were impacted because of COVID. The July 3rd concert being the one that probably sticks out the most. And then the Christmas Lights Parade, one Christmas, we picked up the slack because they had canceled. And we just, Monica came up with a great idea that she learned through the Main Street program, and that was a reverse Christmas parade. So people could stand and watch the parade go by instead of... They drove by and the people were, the parade participants were standing by on the side of the road. So anyway, it was, we've done that. But I wanted to just spend a little bit of time talking about the fact that our organization was founded in 2005. And it was a joint effort through the organization and the city of San Angelo. And we've been staffed by two people the whole time. We've never had more than two employees. And I think that's a testament to the fact that we work very highly efficiently and get a lot of things done. And I wish all of y'all could visit our office someday or spend a few times, a few days, a few hours with us to see the incredible amount of traffic that we get via the telephone and people just dropping in off the street. So it's impressive in that fact that we've been able to accomplish as much as we have as far as just having two staffers. The other element that we do and I'm very excited about and glad that we have Angelo State University, they provide us interns. So it's not quite two. So, but those interns come in just about every semester. And we've also had interns, excuse me, students from Lakeview High School come in and intern with us through the workforce program. So we get a lot of community activity, excuse me, support. And I also wanted to mention to you that the majority of our membership and our, we're based, our funding is primarily based through membership. And our membership is far outweighed by people that don't have property or businesses in downtown. They understand the importance of the development of Downtown San Angelo. And so they are very supportive of that. And great, the Sheep Spectacular project has been over the top in relationship to bringing the community into our corner to support what we're working towards and developing. And I'm so, so proud of Monica and what she's accomplished in the three years that she's been there. She's received accolades through the 20 Under 40 Program. She's part of the Concho Cadre. She's part of the Railway Museum. She's also in the Hispanic Heritage Board Museum Executive Committee. And she's just a bombshell going around helping us develop and outreach our initiatives and goals for Downtown San Angelo. So thank all of y'all for your help and city staff, especially guys, we work with all, with y'all on a constant basis. And it's always fun and challenging. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dell and Monica? Oh, Harry?
No questions. I wanted to just say thanks. What you two do is amazing. What you've done with the downtown area continues to really bring the forefront to the citizens and the visitors that we've had. So I appreciate all you do. And I know you still struggle with that property on the southeast corner of Chadburn and Concho, though. If there's, if there was any way that we could get that taken care of, I think we would have a lot of success. Thank you.
It's all a personal, private rights. But yeah, we work on that all the time, Harry. But, and you know, and thank you for the compliment. But I also want to make sure that we have a real great support system. There's a lot of organizations that step up to the plate to help us accomplish what we're doing. And obviously, the city of San Angelo is the biggest one. And so just know that we're part of the equation. And we're lucky that we get to be the lead group as far as downtown development is concerned. So thank y'all for all your support.
Daniel?
I just want to say, of course, downtown is the heart and soul of any city. And I just want to thank you guys because our downtown is in excellent hands. And by the way, Monica, great presentation. Appreciate you guys. You're welcome.
Very much.
I would like to, at some point during the budgeting time period, reevaluate the money we give to downtown, the hot tax money. They get $25,000 a year. And it's been that amount for many years.
It's, I believe, 2012 was the last time we got a raise. And we're at the bottom of the trough, folks.
So I'd like to put that out there for consideration. And thank you very much.
Tina coming up there as well.
They contribute $75,000 a year to Downtown San Angelo. Thirty-seven five comes from HOT. And the other thirty-seven five comes from the general fund. But we will bring that back for consideration.
Thank you. Item B is consider awarding CE-01-22 Boiler Replacement to Advanced Service Group in the amount of $253,500 for the purchase of a shared boiler system for the Foster Communications Coliseum and Spur Arena, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents.
Morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Morning, Daniel. Here to discuss our, like we said, our boiler units. The Coliseum and Spur Arena, we do share two boiler units since 1999. One of the boiler units actually went down in February due to water in the tubes. And we cannot operate both of, both the Coliseum and the Spur Arena without having the boiler units operable. So we did actually have a walkthrough at the Coliseum for anyone for bids on July 13th. The bids did close on July 21st, and we did receive two proposals. One of the proposals was from Advanced Service Group. And the other one was West Tex Chill Specialists. We did select Advanced Service Group. For the boilers, the two boiler units would be a cost of $253,500. If council does decide to approve this, we will start in August with the approval. In November, the product would arrive. And we're hoping to complete the installation by January. Our funding sources in HOT right now currently, as of June 30th, is $1,000,000.6. And our civic events fund balance is $1,000,000. And restricted for facility use fees, we do have $353,000. Now, with the fun, with the funds, of course, like we spoke about in budget, we're planning to do Magnes Convention Center improvements with the civic events fund balance and the facility use fee. That total actually is around approximately $800,000. And then for the Coliseum, for the boiler units, we're asking to use the Hot Fund for $253,500. SASSRA did say that they would reimburse us half of the total cost, so that would come down to $175,000 being used. So I'm looking for you all's recommendation of approving the RFB for Advanced Service Group in the amount of $253,500.
And that would be reduced in half once, when do we receive payment from the San Angelo Stock Show and Rodeo? Is it after completion? How does that work?
I'm sure it would be after the completion is done, and then we would build them.
Tommy, you probably, above all of us-
There's two parts to that, two parts to that that go forward. And we understand it's a rock and our place. There's a chiller and a cooler and a boiler and all those pieces and parts. We have to be prepared and go. The biggest problem, I want to say, is can we get a hold of these people when it's a critical time? I know, I see the funding here, you've got to have it to go forward. I know that is. I see SASSRA is obligated to do their half according to the contract you've written. So I get that. Can we get a hold of these people? And is it in their service contract to be there when we need them? So, you know, talking rodeo and all these things, are they a local vendor? Are they not?
Yes, Advanced Service Group is a local vendor. And I believe that that was one of the main things that we wanted to make sure is that they would be able to assist us whenever we do need assistance with our boiler units if they were to go down.
Does it tie in? I know the past couple of years, we've used a system that's almost electronic. Can't hold them. We can make those adjustments. Will this help make the Coliseum easier to manage as far as the climate inside?
I'm going ahead and refer that to Ron Lewis, the Facility Maintenance Manager. Director.
Mayor, Council, Daniel? Yes, they're a local group. And we've worked with them before we had them in the contract right now. We have two vendors and about to have three with Duncan from the county's agreement. And they are local, and they know how to work with chillers and boilers. That's the reason they're the best choice on this. And as far as the control system, that's still through our intertell system, which is the same system that controls the air conditioning here. But that's a good thing or bad, I won't say. You tell me if you're hot or cold. But we, yeah, it doesn't change the way it controls. And there's some limitations on that big space, you know, of how you push the air around. But if you've got the hot water or the cold water, you're going to get it closer than you are if you just open the doors up.
Does it integrate with the system we have?
Yes.
Okay.
All they're doing is, all we're doing now is replacing the boilers to be able to heat the water. The controls for how much water comes out, how frequently, the temperature, you control that same as you did before with the system. Some of it's on the unit and some of it's on the controls.
Let me throw one out there, kind of guerrilla in the room here. So will it be adaptable for anything that may happen to the Coliseum if it were to happen over the next four, five, six years?
Yes, because the piping is in the building. And it goes to the Spur and it goes to the Coliseum. So you're going to have to add additional piping to get additional air units if you're going to put like private spaces. And so the capacity for the boilers is plenty. Now, if we're in the Northeast and we have sub-zero, probably not. But we have, all you do is you add another boiler if you need to. And chillers, we have three chillers, and that's redundant. And that's helpful because we do have hot temperatures, you know, lately. So yes, that's always adaptable. That's not a big deal.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Council?
I'm of approval, Mayor.
Tommy has moved for approval, is my second by Karen. I see her head shaking. And any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item C, consider a resolution calling a special election for November 8th, 2022, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an election contract with Tom Green County and providing for the holding of an election to be administered by the Tom Green County Election Office. Julia, you're on.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And as you'll remember, back in November of 2021, we had an initiating committee that came forward and requested the petition paperwork, obtained all of their signatures to put something on the ballot and to have council hear the proposed ordinance. At that time, the city council did not approve the ordinance as written. And that initiating committee had the option to put the ordinance on the ballot as they presented it. And they exercised their right to do that. And so now it's the city's turn to call the election. And this would be for the, making San Angelo a sanctuary city for the unborn. So calling this election is just the next step. We are required to do it by charter. And I did want to point out a couple of things. Early voting will take place October 24th through November 4th. And because of a change to the state legislature, we are required now to have some alternative polling places. So for the first time ever, you won't just be early voting at the Keys Building. And there will be other branches, which are going to be the Concho Valley Transit District, Bus Depot, Westlake Hardware, Riverside Golf Course, and then MHMR. So that'll be the first time in my history in San Angelo that we've been able to early vote at multiple locations. And then Election Day will be actually November the 8th, which is a Tuesday. And there'll be other branch locations. One thing that is important for the public to know, on Election Day, you cannot vote at the Keys Building. I sit there and watch folks come in and out and insist that they want to vote there on that day. Ed B. Keys Building is only available for early voting. So I just want to get that out to the public.
Are there questions from Council on this item? All right, so having no questions or comments, may I have a motion for this item for approval? I guess that's what you need, right? A motion for approval. Harry made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving item C, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, that motion passes 7-0. Item D is consider approving amendments to the tax increment reinvestment zone incentives policy. And John James, you're on.
Thank you. John James, Director, Planning and Development Services. This is the item that you saw last meeting and just brought back those changes that you recommended and then a couple of other notes. So these are the changes that, actually, so first I wanted to go into, Mayor, you asked a question last time if we had covered all of the substantive changes. And so I went back through and read through it one more time. And there were a couple of what I would call substantive changes that I didn't mention specifically. One of those was that the board had a discussion about tax abatements. And there was a discussion about removing the possibility of tax abatements for a property with an incentive project. They ultimately decided to keep those in, but basically to say that those weren't a preferred mechanism, but those would only be used for large, you know, big projects where it made sense. There's a tracking issue with tax abatements as well as not knowing how much it is. So it's hard to budget because tax abatements are, you know, you're abating the taxes over usually a 10-year period. And so you don't know what those taxes are going to be because it varies with the property value. And so that makes it more difficult to track over time. And so, again, they discussed just eliminating that, but they decided they wanted to have that opportunity for large projects, like a recent one we did with the Huddle House and Kent Quick up on Bryant on the north side. They got a tax abatement. But for most of the smaller projects that we look at, they, their preference would be not to give those tax abatements.
Does that make sense to approve it for the north versus the south? And do it, because in the south, with limited funds, you could eat up a lot of money really quick.
It could. The board didn't actually discuss that. I think their idea was it would each be considered on a case-by-case basis. So I would be surprised if they would recommend funding a project in the south with a tax abatement. Again, partly because we have so little money in the south. Committing to something over 10 years where you don't know how much that's going to be each year would be potentially problematic. The second item is, there was a discussion at the Tears Board about signage. And there was a concern with somebody coming in for, you know, Walgreens wanting a new sign, a pole sign. And the board's feeling was that wasn't something that was, you know, if it's part of a remodeling, part of a new business, yeah, that's fine for a sign. But just putting in a new sign or just redoing a sign by itself, they didn't want to fund. Although they did have some discussion about historic signage. And so they left, or they included this provision that revitalization of historic signage in the downtown would be an eligible expense still as a separate project.
There was always the question mark if, I mean, there was some very adamant individuals on the Tears Board who basically said if someone can't afford their own sign for their own business, that there shouldn't be funds asked for if you can't fund your own sign.
That's right. And just a note related to that is, as you know, with south projects, we get more requests than we have funding available. And I know there have been a couple of projects, at least over the last couple of years, where the board had to make some tough decisions on what to fund and what not to fund. And one of the things they did was to fund a particular project, maybe for the facade improvements, but not fund the signs. And so both, you know, the board, as well as you all, as you're looking at projects, you always have the ability to fund a portion of a project, but not the whole request. And that's something that the board has recommended in the past is funding a certain piece, but not the signage for that very reason.
So just- We had Karen.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the wording of the very, the second bullet at the end. So that signage allowance can, they can fund repair and revitalization if it's a historic sign or a sign that's part of a historic building.
That's correct.
Okay.
So now I'll go on to, these are the policy changes that you- So now I'll go on to, these are the policy changes that you all recommended last time. So I just briefly want to go through and you-
Let me ask you a question that brings up. So, because the other part of it is, is as we went through some of these additional things, which is you're going to go through, is the, the issue of job creation. And that's going to be part of this, right?
That's right. Yeah, actually, that, that first bullet is there was a, a change in one of the criteria that you all recommended where it said there was a preference for something that increased the tax base. And so your recommendation was to change that to tax base or employment. So even if, even if it's not potentially elevating the property value of a, of a building, if it's creating employment, that would be a consideration as well. Clarified that the parking improvements must be associated with a business or use rather than just an undeveloped or vacant property. Added the requirement that a property can't be sold for two years after receiving funding and also must remain taxable if it's a taxable property for at least five years after completion of the project. And then the last one here, at least I think it's the last one, changed the expiration date. I had mentioned, you had asked last time, I said, I wasn't sure what the expiration time currently is. And I said, I thought it was three years. It's actually two years currently. You all recommended changing that to 18 months. I just want to point out, we have had, I think, three requests for extensions, even from the two-year period. We've got a new one that we received actually just yesterday that the board will be considering at their next meeting. So I think staff would recommend probably sticking with that two years rather than decreasing it more to 18 months. I think that would increase the likelihood of projects that aren't able to complete within that timeframe. And we would get more requests for extension.
I think the big issue with that has been that we haven't stayed on top of it. So projects that have been funded and have not been completed in way beyond two years, and then that money is tied up. So there are obviously circumstances, particularly over the past couple of years with labor, finding labor or perhaps product to complete it. But what we have to do is make sure we're on top of it so that we don't keep that money tied up if the project's not going to happen. And so that it puts money back in the bank for somebody else. Certainly, I think we have to have some flexibility in terms of the expiration, but at least it brings it up for conversation. And I think that's the important part, whether it's two years or 18 months. I'm not going to get hung up on that as long as we stay on top of it and have a conversation. So everybody knows what the timeframe is for completion and that there's a defined expiration attached to it.
Yeah. And that is the case currently where the agreements that the property owner signs explicitly lists the expiration date. And in fact, we, our staff in economic development does stay on top of those agreements. And if the two years expires and they haven't requested an extension, we will take back to the board an item to revoke that funding. And then it does go back in. So it, currently, it would not exceed two years or two years and a few months, as long as it takes to get that revocation through the board.
I think we're in unusual times. So the supply change and slash labor have complicated it. But I just want to make sure we understand the process and, and what's happening. Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Just to follow along with the mayor saying, so we're talking about, actually, when we say expiration, completion of what is funded in the tiers grant, not the completion of the entire project, correct?
That's correct.
So, but I'm with the mayor. I say keep it at, at least the two years to revisit it because some of this stuff, they can drag on for a while, but we want to make sure that they complete the project that we gave the funds for.
Right.
All right. It's not the entire. So if they had an expansion or extension, they're good with that. That can be two, three, four years.
Sure.
This part is two.
Exactly.
Okay.
Referring to the second-
Go ahead, Larry.
Referring to the second bullet, can parking improvements be the sole or majority project under the tiers grant?
Well, not in the south. And that was one of the revisions that the board, that we presented at the last meeting. In the north, the policy was changed where parking improvements could be the sole project. But in the south, it would remain as, has to be part of a larger project.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments for John? Okay, continue.
I think that was it. The rest of these are just a restatement if there were questions about what had been presented last time. But these are the changes that we heard from you all last time that we've made in the revised draft that's before you.
Let me just, well, we'll open up for public comment, but because Dale is here and there's south tiers money that they oversee a lot of. So we'll open for public comment in a minute if I can have a motion for approval. No?
I mean, some of-
Just to clarify, do you want that to be with the funds expiring at two years or move that to 18 months?
I would say two years.
Even at two years.
We all agreed at two.
Okay. And you're okay with that second, Lucy?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. It's open for public comment. Dale, you want to come forward and talk about it?
Refer back to the two-year, 18-month thing. I'm, I'm very cognizant of the fact that there are major issues with supply and labor. And people are having projects delayed. And it's not because they don't want to have to incur that penalty to them because obviously they're not able to move forward with the project. So I think two years is, is an appropriate timeframe. One of the things that I was, it's not on here, not, I want, I thought that we were going to discuss, there was a proposal for funding that would be from the tiers for additional support for the city. And that was about $53,000. Is that off the table or is that not?
What it is, is it was presented at budget meeting last week for it to become a part of a general fund expense. And we said we're sending it back to the tiers board for consideration.
Okay, I missed that.
And then we'll move from, from that forward, depending on what happens.
Right.
But we, we've put it back in the tiers board for discussion.
Right. You know, one of the comments that was made during the tiers discussion was maybe the south needs to look at different ways to increase their revenue. The, I liken it to me being tied up with my hand behind my back and my, my leg tied behind my back and me going up against the Dallas Cowboys. I don't think I would do very well.
I don't know.
They might need, anything might help.
That was a setup. That was a setup. Anyway, the point, the point being is that, and I wanted to stress this, we are at 42.5% non-taxable income properties within the central business district. And that's no fault of anybody. That's, that is-
It's reality.
It's the reality of what a downtown faces in every metropolitan area or every city. Because that's where the city found, was founded and all the churches and all the federal and state and county and local governments are located. And they don't pay taxes. And then we went through an, a period of time where property became so inexpensive that a lot of the nonprofits were, were, ended up buying the, the property. And that, that even grew the, the problem even further. So in relationship to working towards, and, and trust me, it is top of mind. And when I'm working with a potential business or property owner to develop their, their properties, it is top of mind that we try to influence the decisions that those people are making to make sure that it is taxable and that sales tax revenue and property sells, property taxes are being accumulated. And as you heard in our presentation, we're, we're nearing 300 million in, in, in investment, reinvestment in downtown. And that's taken from 2007 to current. And, you know, and I, when Monica gave that number, I forgot, we didn't include the streetscape private project, which was about, what, eight million in, in roughly? So you can increase it by that. But, you know, we are-
Problem is many of those dollars are nonprofit dollars. Is that correct?
Right. Correct. Lots of nonprofit, unfortunately. But so that is a big challenge for us. And I know the whole discussion took place about, you know, supporting funds from the north to the south. And, and so we are, you know, encouraging council to take a relook at that if you can.
Or not.
And, and look at how possibly we could extend, you know, the funding source for downtown because that's where the funding is needed the most. I, I promise you, you know, I, I look at the north and the north tiers and I see, you know, lots of opportunities, but no one's stepping up to the plate, unfortunately. And I feel-
Well, they are. It just hasn't come to the tiers board yet.
Okay. The other part of this is that we, the tiers board in 2000, I believe it was in 2008 or nine, took a very hard initiative or took a proactive initiative to court the north, to create more opportunities for support, funding there. One of the things that, and I, which is where I was going, at one of our town hall meetings, I mentioned to the, the folks there that downtown San Angelo didn't exist because, it, it came to existence because property owners and business owners decided it was, they needed to do something to help revitalize downtown San Angelo. And if you look back to 19, well, actually, you could start as early as 1972, all the way up until about 2008, there was, there was only three businesses that were open after five o'clock in downtown San Angelo. And now we've got well over 22 businesses that are operating and doing extremely good in terms of, you know, what they bring to the table to help us. So the development, and development is slow, and all of y'all know that. It's, it's an ongoing process. And I think the more influx we have as far as revenue to, from the tiers side, I think it will encourage and continue. And when downtown San Angelo proposed creating the tiers zone back in 2006, I believe, the whole initiative was to get property owners to clean up their facades. That was the number one goal of downtown San Angelo at the time that we proposed the tiers fund be set up. And, and it works. And it does work and it continues to work. I, I personally believe that the number one accolade that downtown San Angelo can, can take credit for is the establishment of the tiers fund and getting that going. And so just wanted to share those thoughts with you for, for future consideration. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Zane White, District Six. Lee Fluger's downtown Hotel Cactus rooftop sign has been in inexcusable state of repair since 2005. And the City of San Angelo Municipal Government has refused to appropriately regulate the sign's condition since then. Since January of this year, I've insisted that the city legally enforce the City of San Angelo Code of Ordinances regarding the blatant sign code violations at the Cactus Hotel. John James, Director of the City Planning and Development Services Department, is ultimately responsible for sign code enforcement at the Cactus Hotel. Since at least January, John James has desperately attempted to fast-track Lee Fluger's entire tiers grant funding process by ignoring, manipulating, and/or entirely rewriting DHRC and tiers policies and procedures. For citizens who aren't aware, John James is the husband of San Angelo City Attorney Teresa James. Months ago, I forced John and Teresa James to finally admit in writing that the rooftop sign was legally in violation of city sign code regulations. Since at least February, John and Teresa James have continued to commit numerous unethical and/or illegal actions as it relates to this matter. I've been informed repeatedly by both John and Teresa James that regardless of city sign code ordinances, the initiation of code enforcement actions in San Angelo is entirely discretionary and that the city has absolutely no obligation to legally enforce code regulations in the manner prescribed within the code of ordinances. My efforts to force, force the city to act illegally has not been well accepted by the City of San Angelo Municipal Government. Yesterday, while quietly waiting to speak with City Attorney Teresa James at her city hall office, I was abruptly confronted by four San Angelo police officers, one of which demanded I immediately leave the public premises. When I asked the officer what reason they had to demand that I immediately leave city hall, I was told, they want you out of here. I immediately requested a police supervisor with which to discuss the matter, and I was immediately arrested. Regarding tiers policy changes, there must be a punitive method by which to absolutely guarantee that tiers projects are completed by the designated deadline. Any related deadline extensions absolutely must be specified in advance in tiered policy, or else the process is worthless. Tiers applicants who are in violation of city codes should either be immediately denied or agree to a lien or other enormous penalties if the project is not completed in time. I, along with thousands of other West Texans, demand the end of this corrupt scam regarding the city illegally ignoring and rewriting policies and refusing to issue legally mandated code violations to Lee Fluger for almost 20 years.
Thank you. One of the things I think we as a, as a city council could do to help relieve some of the needs for money in the southern tiers is there's lots of confusion about the north versus the south and the border. So even though we cannot change the big picture of the tiers area, what we could do is to bring down the northern tiers border down to Boa Guard, which is where north Chadburn starts. So that would open up some additional monies for the south and help give some of those folks on the north Chadburn but are in the south Chadburn tiers zone. So we could potentially look at that as some relief and some additional funds that could come through. So I'm not sure what process we need to go through to do that. Someone could help me with that request?
I've heard that from you, from a couple of other people. I think strongly encourage that. It's a very recognizable landmark line that we have in San Angelo. And I think that would help. I'd, I'd like to say, I think from this side of the bench, you'd get nothing but 100% support, support to move that down the-
So when can we add that to this policy change at this point? I'm not sure when we, I'm just introducing it. So I'm not sure what we have to do is-
Lee, we'd have to check that. I believe that's, that would also include a change to the ordinance. I, I believe that would also take a recommendation by the board. So I think what we can do is take it to the board for their recommendation. Then that would come, that recommendation would come back to you. I, I would recommend not, I'd like to ask, because we've got some, this has some changes that impacts the next funding cycle. So I'd like to, if you are okay with that, go ahead and adopt these changes. Then we can bring that additional change for future discussion with the board and you all.
Okay. So with that, do I have any further public comment? And if not, then what we would want is a motion to approve these changes as presented today, but change the expiration to keep expiration to two years instead of the 18 months. And with that, is there a motion for that?
I'll move.
So move by Larry?
Mayor, we already have a motion on the table.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah.
We have the motion by Councilmember Thompson with a second from Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. All right. So we'll take a vote. All in favor of, of this policy change for tiers, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven zero. And then if you can work on the other conversation, and then you might look at that for a January 1 effective date, because it's, you can't get it done for the next funding cycle, I don't think, John, by the time you get it to the tiers board and then back to city council. So you might timeline-wise look at that as a 2023 start date, first funding cycle.
We'll, we'll have to look at that. I mean, the, the funding cycle opens, I think, October through December. But the actual funding wouldn't come until after the first of the year. So we, we could possibly make it effective even with that next cycle, but we'll have to look at that.
So you'll just follow up on that?
Mayor, if I may real quick?
Yes, please.
I just want to make a comment about my staff. And it comes to John and Teresa. They're two individuals that have, I think they have such high charact- They're two individuals that have, think they have such high character and integrity. And when people come up here and make accusations, it just doesn't sit well for me. We know that on our end, we have to follow policy and procedures, the ordinances of the city, and I can assure you that we have been doing that. These two individuals have been doing that as well. I just want to make sure that I made that very clear, especially for the viewers that are watching on TV at this point. So again, I just want to make that point.
All right, thank you. And so I think we're ready for the next item, and I think you're on for that too, John. So item E is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z22-14 to rezone properties from the general commercial, heavy commercial to the low-rise multifamily residential zoning district being .36 acres located at 213 and 223 West Avenue L and 1610 South Chadburn Street.
Thank you. And you may notice that this acreage number is different. We originally brought a larger rezoning, and through the process, that was, that was narrowed down. The original application was for just one piece of this. As staff looked at that, and I'll explain more in a minute, we thought that whole half block there made more sense to rezone, but there was some opposition to that from some of those property owners. So what you see before you today is just what was asked for by the applicant. You can see this is an area there on Avenue L. It's commercial across the street. The long-range plan for this area, though, is neighborhood, and most of the properties are currently homes. However, you can see it is zoned to CGCH currently, which allows general commercial and heavy commercial. And so with the request on this end of the property to go to multifamily residential, we thought it kind of made sense to look at changing the whole area. Now, part of that, we had recommended not going to multifamily, but to go to general commercial instead of the general commercial, heavy commercial, where little hesitant always putting homes and apartments right next to something that could be heavy commercial. We did send out our notices, received zero in support, two in opposition. I should say that we received more in opposition, but those were to changing those properties. Once we removed those properties, the opposition was reduced to two. And even, even those we left on because they weren't specific on why they were opposed, although we suspect that perhaps at least one of them was also only opposed because of that change over there. As I mentioned, this is designated neighborhood in the future land use plan, so that does support this rezoning to multifamily. And this proposal is for multifamily. Again, it's a small property, so we're not talking a huge apartment complex, but something like a three or four-unit duplex, triplex, kind of a development. Staff does recommend approval of this rezoning, as did the planning commission unanimously. Again, the planning commission's recommendation was to reduce it to the original request because there was some opposition from the commission on expanding it farther. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for John on this item? All right, seeing none, then may I have a motion for approval? Carrie?
Overtake approves, presented.
Thank you. A second, second by Karen. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes 7-0. Our last item on the regular agenda is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z22-16 to rezone properties from the ranch and estate to the single-family residential and neighborhood commercial zoning districts being 31.17 acres located northwest of Arden Road and FM 2288.
Thank you. So this is FM 2288 and Arden Road. This was an area that was annexed two or three years ago. That development didn't really move forward, and so now new owners are looking at development. It came in annexed as ranch and estate, but now they're looking at, you know, regular single-family home development, and so that's the reason for the request to RS1. And in the plans, this area is shown for commercial, and so this little strip right at the front would go to that commercial designation.
That's not in Harry Thomas's district, is it? 2288 is not in his district. So let's go back and make sure Larry gets credit for credit due on this piece of property.
He was protesting over there, Mayor.
He can have a phone call.
And so as I mentioned, this, this is the long-range plan for the area, so commercial up on FM 2288 with neighborhood behind it. And so I think the longer-term plans are for commercial at the front. That's why there's this small strip there that would be going to neighborhood commercial zoning, with the remainder being RS1. You may recall, you'll be seeing a case here in maybe a month. They have asked to annex an additional small piece of that. You'll be seeing, you, you accepted the petition for that a meeting or two ago, and then the annexation of that and the rezoning of that to RS1, you'll be seeing at a future meeting as well. We did send out the notices. Again, this is all basically one property owner, and so we did receive two in support and none in opposition.
Larry, any questions or comments?
Karen got a note. It wasn't directed at me, but it, it showed some concern over a potential loop road to the west of that area, which would be cutting across a number of ranches. I'd like to know more about this.
Yeah, the long-range plan, you can see the layout here. They'll be developing back in the back, but they will be building a road from FM 2288 to get back to this property. Our long-range plans have another, either collector or Monarch, Terriell Street that would come from Arden up through this way. And so this would ultimately connect that way. So those are the major collector roads for that area. I don't know, I haven't seen that, so I don't know if that's what it's about, but that would be my guess, is that it, it's this north-south collector road just to the west that perhaps is what the concern is. But that has been on our long-range plans to ensure that connectivity as this whole area develops.
Well, long, you know, I think the, the issue would be, we know, or you know, I'm not sure most of us know, what the long-range plan is. And so when you talk about it, I'm sure most property owners at this point might not be aware of what the long-range plan is.
Well, and I should also add that, that if the concern is large ranch properties and they don't want to be broken up, that those roads would never be built until those properties come in to develop. We typically don't go out and, as a city, and build streets. It's the developers as they develop those properties. So as an example here, this piece that I mentioned, I believe it's the piece here that they're annexing, that includes that collector street. And so they'll be building actually just this piece of it, but that road would not be extended into this area or this area until those property owners decide to develop those properties. So it would only, in other words, it would only be breaking up a ranch when that ranch owner decides to sell for development.
But not before.
Correct.
Thank you.
Karen, you go ahead.
I'm sure they'll appreciate that, that information. This is a particularly diligent property owner, and they located a map in the city database that shows where that, that roadway might go. I think they might be interested in knowing, should that happen, as described in the map that's posted on the city website, how many existing property owners would be affected. That might be useful information. I have the map and can send it to you.
Well, and you can see here on this map, we do have those, those blue lines are those collector streets. And it does not appear that that, those would cross. I mean, sometimes you might have a situation where there are homes built up against that already, and so that future road would at some point have to maybe split between two homes. From this area, it doesn't look like that's the case. The other thing about our future transportation plan like this, those are conceptual lines. So for example, if this developer comes in and it makes sense to shift that road over 20 feet or 50 feet, that's all-
Not a hard line.
Yeah, that's all consistent with our plans. And so in a case where it does show, you know, sometimes those roads show going through somebody's house, well, typically we wouldn't do that. You know, it would, it would shift over to go between houses. But these are, these maps are done at a very conceptual level, basically to ensure that as growth happens, we do have those interconnected streets, that each individual subdivision isn't a pod into itself, because that creates future congestion and traffic problems if you don't have that road interconnectivity.
I think we're just trying to address their curiosity. It does appear as a bold red dashed line, and it looks like a loop, kind of a loop.
Probably have a lot of other projects to do first.
I'd be happy to get with you and-
That'd be great.
Provide them more information.
All right, with that, may I have a motion for approval?
Approved.
So moved by Tommy.
Second.
Seconded by Karen and Larry. It's a dual second.
Yes.
Meeting second.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes 7-0. We will now move into closed session, executive session under the provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under The Following Sections. A, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding Lots 7, 8, 9, and 10, Block 18, in the San Angelo Edition. And B, Section 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding Proposed Agreement With All Tax Irrigation and Supply LLC For Park Amenities. We will be adjourned at 9:51 a.m. 39 a.m. on August the 16th, and this meeting is called back in order in the closed session. There are no announcements to be made following that executive session, so we will move on to announcements and consideration of future agenda items if there are any. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion for dismissal, adjournment. So moved by Tommy, seconded by Lucy. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 10:40 a.m. on August the 16th.